Good evening. We are back in open session into our regular session at 7:08 with all trustees present. I'm the Grapevine Colville Independent School District Board of Trustees and the Central Station. We'd like to pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the continued successes of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. Now, at this time, we're very excited. We've got some visitors here with us tonight from Cannon Elementary, and they will help us with the U.S. and the Texas pledges. So if you will, they will proudly represent their school by leading the pledges and then followed by their thoughts on how they're progressing towards the portrait of a graduate. So your students, come on up.
You want us to stand?
You want us to stand? Yeah. Okay. You need to tell us.
You're in charge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
As students of Cannon Elementary, we have many other things because of our partnerships. Tonight, we would like to share with you one example of our partnerships between Boyd, Cannon, and the education foundation support of the Trans-Elementary Education.
Throughout this part, throughout this partnership, we have the opportunity for accelerated learning experiences in STEM education, preparing us, preparing us for our future as graduates in GCISD.
My name is Brianna, and I'm interested in becoming an architect. As an architect, I will need to collaborate with clients to understand their dreams. My Ames Accelerated Studies has taught me how to collaborate with others. Mi nombre es Brianna, y estoy interesada en ser arquitecta. Como arquitecta, tengo que colaborar con clientes para convender sus sueños. Mis estudios acelerados de Ames me han enseñado cómo colaborar con otros.
My name is Williams New, and I'm interested in becoming an inventor specializing in mechanical engineering. I want to make your future work better by understanding problems and then using my mechanical engineering to design solutions. Ames helped me balance my time expectations in order to be a self-related.
Mi nombre es William, se dio, y estoy interesado en convertirme en un inventor especializado en ingeniería mecánica. Quiero mejorar el futuro del mundo esté entendiendo problemas y luego usando la ingeniería mecánica para diseñar soluciones. Ames me ayuda a balancear mi tiempo, expectativas, y progreso en mi trabajo para ser un alumno autoacudado.
My name is Karina Diaz. I'm interested in being an elementary STEM teacher because I like to help others. Ames has taught me that in order to work with other students of different age groups, I have to be able to communicate effectively. Mi nombre es Karina Diaz, y estoy interesada en siendo una maestra de STEM de primaria porque me gusta ayudar a los demás. Ames me ha enseñado que para poder trabajar con otros estudiantes de diferentes grupos de edad, tengo que poder comunicarme de manera efectiva.
My name is Julian, and I want to be a doctor so that I can help my family. My work in Ames has given me confidence to share my ideas. Try them out. Test and evaluate before improving. This is developing me as a skilled problem solver, ready for my medical studies. Mi nombre es Julian, y quiero ser médico para ir, para ayudar a mi familia. Mi trabajo en Ames me ha dado la confianza para compartir mis ideas. Pruébalas y evaluarlas antes de mejorar. Esto me está ayudando a las, a desarrollar como un experto en solucionar problemas y preparar para mis estudios médicos.
My name is Isabella Lea, and I'm going to be a forensic scientist. I love solving mysteries and helping people. In both Ames and our daily work in STEM, we connect to experts from many backgrounds. This will help me understand many different ways of thinking and exposing to different cultures. That's important when you are trying to solve crimes. Mi nombre es Isabella Lea, y voy a ser un forense, forense médico. Encanta, me encanta resolver misterios y ayudar a las personas. Tanto en Ames como nuestro trabajo diario en STEM, nos conectamos con expertos de muchos áreas. Esto me ayudará a comprender diferentes formas de pensar y me expone a diferentes culturas. Eso es importante cuando tú intentas resolver problemas.
From the bottom of our 3D-printed hearts, we want to thank you for your vision and support. We love learning at Cannon.
Thank you, you. Thank you, thank you. You did a great job. Great job. Before, y'all, y'all stay up here, and you're going to turn around, and I'm going to introduce you one more time, but turn around and look at the audience because your parents want to take pictures of your front. So raise your hand when I call Isabella, Karina, Brianna, William, and William. Y'all did a great job. Parents and friends that are here and support the students, I asked you to stand, but raise your hands too. I think we can tell by who's taking pictures. Thank you all for your support of our students. Also like to thank Jeanne Garrett, she's here. Drive up here with a picture.
Julie Gorashar?
I was going to ask Ms. Garrett who else she had with her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else Ms. Garrett you'd like to introduce?
There are several Cannon staff members in the audience. Would you guys just stand up real quick and Cannon students that are here to celebrate our students?
Thank you very much. Students, y'all did a great job. Thank you very much. Very good job. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Ryan for an introduction of our recognitions this evening.
Thank you very much. The first thing we have is our LEAD 2.0 highlight. It's this point of time in every board meeting where we bring to our community and to our board and the people in the audience, an update on our strategic plan that we call LEAD 2.0. And we're highlighting the work this, this portion of the meeting to show trustees and our community just how LEAD 2.0 goals are impacting students. This month, we're going to have an update with the district's efforts in regard to the district's program for students with dyslexia, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Schnaps.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So tonight, we're excited to highlight our dyslexia program and the ways in which we serve and support our dyslexic learners to help them be successful in the learning environment. So to lead us through this highlight tonight is Amy Montemayor. Amy?
Thank you, Dr. Schnaps and trustees. And I have a group today that's going to help me present. I have Cindy Felker, who is our literacy intervention teacher leader, and then I have two of our literacy interventionists. I have Kaiann Robinson and Jennifer Coffey, and then they brought with them two of their students. We have Krista Strong and also Peyton Cruzell.
Okay, just to refresh your memory on what dyslexia is, it's characterized by difficulties with accurate and/or fluent word recognition and by support spelling and decoding abilities. These difficulties typically result in a deficit in the phonological component of language and is often unexpected in relation to other cognitive abilities and the provision of adequate classroom instruction. Okay, so this year, about a year ago, we got a new state dyslexia handbook. It used to be a nice baroon color, and now it's a burnt orange color. That's how we can tell the difference. With it, we got a kindergarten and first grade dyslexia screener, and they, the name of our dyslexia instruction that we use is called Standard Protocol Dyslexia Instruction, SPDI. It includes a new section on dysgraphia and also includes training in higher ed in regards to dyslexia. Some of the things we do here at GCISD, some of the different campuses, students with dyslexia, we constantly want to build them up about their strengths. We want them to see what their strengths are and to really highlight them and give them self-confidence through their strengths. So at one campus, they had a poster about what they excel at, and if you can notice at the very top, the dyslexia awareness words are coded. That's what we do in our dyslexia instruction. Another bulletin board that we had, how did we use the learning outside of the classroom? It's a constant struggle to get our students to take what they learn in our classroom with them when they leave. So that just highlights how, gets them thinking about how they use it outside of the dyslexia . For so many individuals, they're not successful in spite of having dyslexia or possibly because of having dyslexia. Our assessment this year, so far, we've got 100, roughly 136 students in the process. So far, we have identified 36 of those students with dyslexia. We've tested 49 so far, and 87 assessments are in the process right now. You can see how our numbers have grown over the years. Right now, we're sitting at 703 students. Students, they stay identified with dyslexia even after dyslexia intervention has been completed. The state dyslexia identification percent for 1819 was 3.6.
So I'm going to take a step back. Two slides ago, you saw our cool shirts that we created this year. So this is what the students do as they're in dyslexia intervention. They learn how to code their reads, their words in order to read them. And so this is just a little snapshot of some of the things the literacy interventionists have done this year. Top left, they started this year by creating pencils with inspirational quotes to give out to the students. The bottom left, the 24th State Dyslexia Conference was in Hurst, and so we had a good representation that was able to attend that and continue our learning. And then another big thing this year was working alongside with the diagnosticians. So on that right-hand picture, the literacy interventionists and diagnosticians, in that picture, we're talking about how our work is similar and the things that we do are the same. Last year, Stetson came and completed an evaluation or a report, and so what have we accomplished this year in regards to that report? Professional development for staff. So one thing we offer in GCISD is flex learning. Teachers are given two days to continue their learning, and so we have some information about dyslexia in there. All employees participate in simulations, and that is what dyslexia. Is, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we were just testing like two or three times throughout the year. And so we moved to testing here a lot longer, which is definitely better for students. But that led to some one-on-one intervention. We know that students always like to be around other students when they're learning, and we want to use our interventionist ability. So working on reducing one-on-one intervention so that we have anywhere between two to five kids in a dyslexia intervention group. Continued work, we have three sessions in the fall, and then we'll offer three sessions again in the spring. They bring folks from outside to come and share their knowledge, guide our district, experience a dyslexia lesson, a dyslexia simulation where parents can go through what the teachers have gone through, and then also digital accommodations. It's amazing what students can access through technology to help them accommodate. Another point was communication with classroom teachers and that transition during intervention and also at the end of intervention. Cindy touched on it earlier, but helping the students realize you're not just going to this separate room to learn a skill and strategy and leaving it there. We need to make sure that we're taking it back into the classroom. Also, helping teachers come in so that they can observe their students in a dyslexia intervention to help that ongoing communication back and forth. And then monitoring progress of students. Once a student's identified with dyslexia, the identification stays with them even after they're done with their intervention, but we want to make sure that they continue to be successful as they progress through their schooling. As I talked about, here are our parents and some of our teachers. That bottom picture and the right picture, their teachers are participating in the dyslexia simulation. And then the top left, we had parents and students with their digital devices adding digital accommodations that they can utilize both at home and at school. And then we've got our students. On the bottom left, we've got a group that's going through a dyslexia lesson, and on the top right, we've got a group at the beginning working on that letter fluency as they move into their dyslexia lessons. So now, we're going to have the teachers and some of our students share out.
Hi, I'm Kaiann Robinson, and this is my 22nd year of teaching, and this is my third year as a literacy interventionist. I'm at Bear Creek Elementary, and I brought with me Krista Strong, and she's going to talk about some things that we have discussed with her, how dyslexia has impacted her learning, the accommodations she has, and what she wants everyone else to know about dyslexia.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Coffey. This is also my 22nd year of teaching, and they've all been in the district. I was at Silver Lake for 20 years, and this is my second year at GMS. So it's been a big jump for me to go up to the big kids. So we just wanted to let you know that there's a lot of exciting things going on in the world of dyslexia in the district. We have a lot, like Amy talked about, a lot of new collaboration happening with the teachers. We have a form that the teachers are filling out every three weeks, and we are as well, to talk about what we are noticing so that we can really keep tabs on our kids and make sure that we can give them the best interventions possible. Accommodations in the classroom as well, so educating teachers as far as how kids can be advocates for themselves in the classroom. And I have brought Peyton Cruzell, she's an eighth grader, working with me, and so we'll have the kids share because we feel like their voices are the most valuable here.
Okay, so let's see. So how has going to dyslexia intervention impacted your learning?
Dyslexia intervention has really impacted my learning. When I began intervention in third grade, I would sound out almost every word when I read. I would have to read out loud in class, and in case that I was stuttering because I was trying to sound out every word. I didn't like reading out loud in intervention. In intervention, I have learned about letters, sounds, combinations, diagrams, final staple syllables, and this has helped me read much better, and I don't sound like I'm stuttering when I read out loud. I noticed that what I am learning in dyslexia is really locked in my brain and is learning and making, and making me have an easier time reading and writing. I try to spell words used, having codes, words on paper when I was reading or using the coded words on paper. I'm able to code words in my head, and everything doesn't take as much time. I also used to confuse printed letters, but now cursive has really helped me, and it looks pretty. And I'm able to read all 50 decodable words. That makes me very proud of myself. When I began dyslexia intervention, I was, I was reading below a grade level, and I'm proud to say I'm reading on a sixth grade level.
This dyslexia program has really helped me in different ways that I didn't know was possible. Before I entered this program, I was always a perfectionist, although I still might be one, it's not in the aspect of spelling. It has helped me realize that spelling will always be a challenge, but I can keep working on it and make it as perfect as possible.
What accommodations do you use, and how have they helped you?
My accommodations are I can ask to have words and questions read to me. I get extra time on work and tests, and I have modified assignments. I know it is important to know my accommodations and advocate for myself. I think modifying spelling tests have really helped me this year. I have 10 words that are from my list of 20, and I'm, and I can code those words and look for patterns in those 10 words. When I have 20 words, I get frustrated and mix them up, but with, with them in my writing, after the spelling test, I have made 100 on all my spelling tests this year.
A few examples of the accommodations that I use are small group and oral accommodations. These two accommodations help me stay focused, stay calm, and help me perform the best on my tests.
What do you all wish everybody else knew about dyslexia?
I wish everybody, I wish everybody knew that having dyslexia isn't something to be ashamed of. People used to say I was dumb in third grade because I couldn't read as well as the other be, as the other kids. Ms. Robinson let me invite the boys to my dyslexia class. They got to see what I could, what I can do, and their minds were blown. They learned about dyslexia and got to see the way I learned best, and then they really knew I was smart and they stopped making fun of me. Dyslexia is a gift, and it makes me unique. I know I will be a successful person because I know how to work hard and get what I want.
The big thing I knew that I want others to know and acknowledge and realize is although it might not be your traditional everyday class, you still work just as hard in that class as you do in all the others. In that class, you are working towards a hard goal and trying your hardest every single day.
Okay, so, excuse me, Twitter. We're going to wrap it up with some shareouts from parents that we've had over the past couple months. And I'd like to thank y'all and tell you that we appreciate you for the support and ongoing everything that you do for us and for our students and our teachers.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for them while we're up here? Jorge?
I have a question on page 11. When you have the dyslexia assessment, 36 out of 136 is a lot lower than the previous year. Do you know why it's so much lower this year?
Well, so that's 136 that are in the process. So of that 136, 49 have been completed.
Okay.
So out of the 49, 36 were identified with dyslexia. So we currently have 87 students in the process of being tested for dyslexia. That's one of the things about the year-round testing is that the numbers will change. One thing we didn't talk about was that the ARCs, where the diagnosticians and the literacy interventionists come together. So every time there's a meeting to review data, then the numbers change.
I guess my other question is on, when you had those meetings, I mean, 504s for accommodations, I mean, I hear from parents that some of them are done like, you know, October, for example, like right after, you know, you had three, four, five, six weeks of school, and you had this meeting kind of in the middle of the semester. Why is it that, why isn't those meetings done earlier so that everybody knows what accommodations they need to have starting on day one or maybe soon after?
So the, when school starts in August, any of the 504 meetings, whether it's an IEP meeting, that paperwork and documentation is shared with the teachers, so the teachers are aware of all of the students. The reason that 504s and ARCs happen throughout the year is that they're held within a year of when they were last, when they last met. At any time, a parent, a student, a teacher can ask for a 504 or an ARD meeting.
So you don't have the meeting, the teachers already know what accommodations the students need?
Yeah, as every year when the school year starts, the 504 coordinators on the campus hand out the accommodations to the teachers.
Any other questions? Girls, you did a great job. Thank you.
So this brings up our first recognition, which is the Red Ribbon Week winners. Each year in October, during Red Ribbon Week, the district coordinates friendly contests to engage students in supporting a drug-free message. Across the district, our students participated in a poster contest and public service announcement video contest, and tonight, we're going to recognize some of the top winners of each of these categories. The Red Ribbon Poster Contest is for elementary and middle school students, and tonight, we're recognizing the first-place winners in each grade. And so trustee Louis Sullins is making his way to be able to present you a certificate. First of all, in pre-K, we've got Asela, Asela Ariano from Silver Lake Elementary School. There she is. All right.
Louis, Louis, making her cry.
He makes everybody cry. All right, in first grade, we've got Zishon Lakani from Grapevine Elementary. Couple of second and third graders couldn't be here, so in fourth grade, we've got Maisy Connor from Heritage Elementary. Do we have a third grader? Well, here we go. We're going to, we're going to talk up to Maisy, then we'll go back and catch our third grader. All right, let's go back to Ayu Niyak from OC Taylor Elementary. First place in third grade. Fourth grade again is Maisy Connor. Fifth grade, Ensha Lakani from Grapevine Elementary. In sixth grade, first place was to Bella Rivera from Grapevine Middle School. And in eighth grade, Jalen Perkins from Grapevine Middle School. Do we have any teachers or other folks that are here that are supporting these students at this point? Okay, good deal. Thank you all for being here. Now, we've got the public service announcement contest. It's where students create videos showing how they say no to drugs and It's where students create videos showing how they say no to drugs and how they live a drug-free life. At this time, we'd like to recognize our top two finishers in this category. So this is our first runner-up video.
Cigarette and I'm here to talk to you about smoking. Here are some of the things that are in a cigarette. Rocket fuel, paint, batteries, wa- and nicotine. Nicotine is very addictive. If you don't take it once or twice, it's very hard to stop. And there's a bunch of other stuff too. It also increases your ca- risk of cancer. And adults, if you smoke, your kids are more likely to smoke. And those are just some of the reasons you shouldn't smoke.
All right, so, um, that's a great video from Heritage Elementary School, Caleb Null, third grader. Now we're gonna set up the winning video.
Mmm, this smells good. Do you guys wanna try?
No, my mom would kill me.
Are you sure? It smells really good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm positive. Let's continue with the telecon.
No.
Yeah, what is peer pressure? Peer pressure is usually when you don't wanna do it. It could be dangerous or it's not very healthy for you.
If you're ever involved in a peer pressure situation, these are only a couple of ways to say no.
All right, good deal. That is the winning video from fifth graders at Cannon Elementary School. And that is Reagan Nasius, Marley Ford, and Adia Stoll. And if we have any principals that are here, uh, representing the schools from the, with the students, let's get our principals up front so we can have them added to the picture. You're welcome. Okay, so kindergarten, there we go. We gotta get our kindergarten winner up here from Heritage Elementary School, Guarri Dave. All right, and our second grade winner also from Heritage Elementary School, Om Dave. Now we can get our principals up here and take a big picture with everybody. There we go. Thank you to our photographers, our parents, and our friends.
Now all the grownups come in, all the cross-country student athletes.
From this way.
All right, so our next recognition is one that's very exciting. For the second straight year, GCISD has earned one of the top honors available to any company in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. And that's being named a Dallas Morning News Top One Hundred Place to Work. The Dallas Morning News solicits nominations each spring, then gathers feedback from employees from all the nominated employers. Companies are graded in leadership, sense of mission, career opportunities, culture, and pay and benefits. And GCISD was one of just two school districts to earn the Top One Hundred Place to Work designation. It's an honor to know that, that our staff values the work that we're all accomplishing for our students. And we're now gonna ask our HR department, who has led this work across the district, to, uh, come forward. This is our human resources team, which worked behind the scenes and were instrumental in helping them, uh, this recognition happen. Trustee Jorge Rodriguez is gonna present the Top One Hundred Workplace Plaque to Gemma Paget and Nancy Schwa and Gail Nadavick and Erica Passvar and Helen Bellauer. And also, at the event, let's get a couple of other folks up here. Uh, Natalie, uh, Natalie Finch is not here. She went to the event. Darla Helms is here. And Darla has been teaching for thirty-six years in GCISD. We also had Nancy Hale at, um, at the banquet there. And I don't know if I saw Mr. Fingers or not. He's not here. But this group is certainly responsible for representing GCISD and all of our employees at the Dallas Morning News Top One Hundred Places to Work. Now, we also wanna add a few more people to the picture. If you are any employee in GCISD, if you will come add to the picture. So I see Mr. Zart in the back, and he's gonna hate this, but he needs to be in the picture. I've got a couple of high school principals over here, people that are hugging the walls. Anybody else? Even people in chairs.
Jorge, what are you doing?
Next, we have a very special recognition. We want to recognize GCISD Executive Director of Special Services, Dr. Joanne Wishman, who's earned the So Dr. Wishman has earned the American Speech Language Hearing Association Fellowship Distinction. To be awarded a Fellow by the ASHA is one of the highest honors in the country that the association bestows. Nominees must have made outstanding contributions to the discipline of communication science disorders, uh, sciences and disorders. Joanne has served as the, where, where are you going? Joanne has served as the GCISD's Executive Director for Special Services for over three years, but has worked in various roles in public education for over thirty years. She began her career as a speech therapist in Wise County and has along the way made numerous contributions in the speech, language, pathology, and related areas before moving into administration in two thousand and two. Dr. Wishman has authored dozens of articles and given numerous presentations as part of national and state-level speech, language, pathology publications and conventions. Fellows are nominated by two or three fellow members and these, uh, can't have been students or coworkers in the nominee within the last ten years. In other words, when someone is awarded the ASHA Fellow, they are truly a nationwide contributor in this field. In fact, Dr. Wishman was nominated by a communicative disorders professor at Utah State University, a speech, language, pathology program director at Texas Tech University Health Science Center, and the former Chair of Communication Sciences and Disorders at the University of Central Florida. So, uh, in addition to the certificate from the board, the GCIC Speech Language Pathology Team is here and they have already shown their signs. We will ask them to come up here and join her in the picture.
Bring your signs.
As they're moving, Dr. Wishman will be officially honored by the ASHA at its national convention in Orlando later this week. So she's going to Orlando for her contributions to administration services to state, national associations. Congratulations and thank you, Joanne. Next, we'd like to recognize the Colville Heritage High School Panther, Panther Band and Diamonds, who first, for the first time since nineteen ninety-nine, advanced to the UIL State Marching Band Contest. Let's get on up. There we go. They're not shy. We're gonna ask trustee Mindy McClure to present you with the certificate. Uh, the Panthers advanced by placing third at Area, which was held at, uh, Birdville High School on October the twenty-sixth. And that gave them just one week to prepare for a trip to San Antonio where they would compete in the state UIL contest. At the prelims on November the second, the Panthers' gold rush performance finished in thirteenth place. And this was a season to be incredibly proud of. The group of Panthers made history and captivated the entire community along the way. And so we just wanna say congratulations. And we would also like to have our director, Nick Thomas, and staff and everyone else, uh, there for the picture. So we'd like to have the microphone. I wanna hear, um, from the folks that we just took their picture. I wanna hear what grade you're in, uh, and then, um, yeah, your name would be good too.
Hello, uh, ooh, is this on? I don't know how this works.
Yeah, and I guess we need to hear about your instrument as well.
All right, sounds good. Hi, my name is Jack Rourke. Uh, I'm a senior this year. I play trombone. And within the band, I'm the brass captain, so I help work with brass and like manage rehearsals and things.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Josh. I'm the, uh, woodwind executive officer. So I'm on the field helping out the woodwind side of things. Uh, I'm a saxophonist, so love jazz, love playing the saxophone and classical also, but really excited to be here.
Hey, everyone. My name is Adith Dhuvori. I'm a senior at Colville. Uh, I'm the percussion captain, which means I'm out there with the battery and the pit. Uh, I personally play the bass drum, so it's the big drum that you bang on the side. For those who aren't in the band, yeah.
Hi, I'm Christina Thorcel. I'm a senior. Um, I'm the head drum major of the Colville Heritage Band and I also play the clarinet.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I'm a junior and I'm one of the other drum majors. And you might have seen me running around the field this season. Um, and I also play bassoon.
Hi, my name's Abby Martin and I am in the band, the Diamonds Captain. So I basically help them both on the field and inside a gym. Uh, we're lucky to have that privilege as a section, so. Oh, and I'm in eleventh grade.
Senior.
Mr. Thomas, if you could take the microphone and introduce anybody else in the audience that you'd like to talk a little bit about the show and the year and the performance at the Alamo Dome.
Absolutely. Well, first off, I wanna thank the school board for taking time out of the evening to really just recognize a tremendous accomplishment from the year. It's, as, as mentioned, it was twenty years ago that the Colville Heritage Band last advanced to the state contest. So, um, on behalf of the entire team, because it really is a team effort, obviously the students put in the work, um, wanna just recognize our assistant directors, uh, Nick Bodett, our percussion director, uh, Aaron Duggar, new to us this year, uh, and Ms. Caitlin Hall, also new to us. So with a, with a kind of a young staff and just a really talented work ethic, we really just kinda broke through that glass ceiling and the students were so thrilled. Uh, can't tell you how thrilled we were with the performance the students gave. They represented, uh, this community and the campus with pride, but also just the amount of support we received at home. While we were away, we had the football team watching the livestream. Uh, Dr. Groppel was tweeting every moment of it for everyone that couldn't be there. And it was an honor to represent the Grapevine-Colville community and of course, Colville Heritage High School. So thank you for your support of this special year.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Again, thank you guys so much.
Next, we'd like to recognize the Colville Heritage High School Girls Cross Country Team, as well as both, uh, the Grapevine High School Girls and Boys Cross Country Teams. All three of these teams advanced to the UIL State Cross Country Meet in Round Rock earlier this month with tremendous success. And we were the only school district that had three teams down there. So it was a pretty amazing, uh, situation for GCISD. We'll invite, uh, head coach Nick Taylor and the Colville Heritage Girls Team and staff to come forward to meet trustee Becky St. John. Panthers finished thirteenth as a team in what was just the second state meet appearance in school history. In order to get to Round Rock, the Panthers finished third at the regional meet, their highest ever finish. And also, Felisa Sahib finished tenth overall. That is an all-state place. She was twenty-seventh last year. Isn't that right, Felisa? Forty-seven. Twenty-seven sounds better than forty-seven. That's okay. You were forty-seventh last year and you were tenth this year, right? Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome. Uh, so she picked up all-state honors, making her only the second girl in school history to make all-state. And we also wanna pass the microphone and, uh, let's let each person, um, tell us their name and what grade they're in.
Hi, I'm Hayden Cowdery.
I have to tell Coach, you and your girls, you know, obviously we were there watching the race. Y'all should have been top-ten. You've been an amazing pack, and I really thought y'all had top-ten. I know y'all were nothing, within what, five points, and both 11th in both places. Y'all just had...
An impressive, beautiful run at stake, so I just wonder why y'all know that.
Thank you.
And this is for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Take it away.
Hi, I'm Hayden Cowdery, and I'm a ninth grader.
Hi, I'm Kimbria Keith. I'm a ninth grader.
I'm Ellen Beard. I'm an 11th grader.
I'm Jaclyn Turner. I'm a 10th grader.
I'm Fatima Hussein. I'm 11th grader.
I'm Mia Suho. I'm an 11th grader.
I'm Felisa, and I'm an 11th grader.
I'm Gretchen Piper. I'm a senior.
I'm Melissa, and I'm a senior.
All right, another round of applause for Coach Taylor and the cross-country team from Colville Heritage High School. Congratulations. Next, we'll invite Grapevine High School head coach Rick Miller and the Grapevine High School Girls Team and staff to come forward. First, the GHS Girls Team finished in second place at the state meet. It's best finish since winning state in 2015. The Mustangs also won their 11th consecutive district championship this season, and then won their second straight Region 1 championship and qualified for the state meet for the sixth consecutive season. It's an amazing run of success. Thank you. All right, so Coach Miller, if you could take the microphone. I know that's a dangerous thing, handing Coach Miller the microphone. But talk a little bit about the season, and then I'd like for each person on the team to be able to introduce themselves, tell us what grade they're in.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Trustees and Dr. Ryan for recognizing us tonight. As far as the girls are concerned, what a tremendous job all year long. They set their goals at the beginning of the season, and a very selfless group. I've never enjoyed a season more. They worked really hard all year long, stayed focused on their goals, and they were able to achieve some goals, and they're still going. And we have another meet coming up here on Saturday, something we're looking forward to, but just super proud of this group, just a tremendous job all year long, working together for a common goal. Great job, ladies.
I'm Ashley Dove. I'm a senior, and I'm a team captain.
Caroline Burrow, junior.
I'm Rachel Sutcliffe. I'm a junior, and I'm also a captain.
I'm Lindsay Smith, and I'm a junior.
I'm Lila Nicodemus. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Kylie Heims, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Serena Granados, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Emmy Mangam. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Abigail Kini, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Coach Nisbet, and I coach.
And a Grapevine High School graduate, by the way. Any other pictures that we need? One more round of applause for our silver medalists. And if you'll just... But don't go too far, because we're going to get a picture with boys and girls here in just a moment. Next, we'll invite the Grapevine High School Boys Team and staff to come forward. The GHS Boys Team also finished second at the state meet, its second runner-up finish in the last three years. Mustangs also won their 10th straight district championship this season, won their third regional title in the last five years, and also qualified for the state meet for the sixth consecutive season.
A little bit about this group. You know, we returned one off last year's state meet team, and I know a lot of the pundits didn't think that this group could get back, let alone play second, but great leadership from our seniors. We had a bunch of underclassmen that really stepped up, and like I said earlier, no team has worked better together. The team spirit of synergy was a strength, and that was something that I thought really carried us to the level that we were able to compete, and I'm just so proud of this group. Very gratifying season. Congratulations, guys. Great job.
Another round of applause.
I'm Andrew Ballard, senior.
Carlos Hernandez, senior.
Jonathan McHugh, senior.
Ian Strickland, senior.
Trey Leather, 10th grader.
Connor Wachtel, sophomore.
Walker St. John, sophomore.
Kalilah Bell, junior.
Lesweigh Granados, sophomore.
Brian Guevara, sophomore.
Grant Saunders, sophomore.
Michael Howland, junior.
Congratulations again, and let's now bring... Let's bring the girls back up and...
Ready, one, two, three.
It is very, very difficult in any sport to make it to the state level, and we have a little bit of a spoiling there of riches, an embarrassment of riches almost, with our cross-country teams, because they're there every single year, and we're really proud of the work that they're doing. And thank you to the parents that get them up there early in the morning as well. Next, we'll have our annual update from the GCIC Council of PTAs. At this time, I'd invite Council President Kim Barvis to the podium, and she's there.
Good evening. Thank you, President Pardo, trustees, and Dr. Ryan for allowing me the opportunity to present on behalf of the GCIC Council of PTAs and all of our local PTAs. PTA's vision is every child, one voice, and it is my honor to be able to let you guys know what work we have been doing in pursuit of that vision. I will start with the results from last year. We have had quite a few people that have been willing to join with us in supporting our schools. Last year, our membership numbers ended at 7,700, and as you can see, for the last three years, we have been on a steady increase with those membership numbers, and over that three-year period, we have had an 18 and 1/2% increase, which we are super excited about. I can tell you for this year, a large portion of that increase that we are seeing is actually educator members, so we are super excited about that. Moving on to our volunteer hours, we ended last year with 138,250 volunteer hours. We know that these are always under-reported. It's difficult to get people to remember to turn in their hours, but you can see based on that three-year history there that we have had a steady increase there as well, with an 11% increase over that timeframe. And when you talk about the value that those hours provide to GCIC, those hours represent 66 and 1/2 full-time equivalents, and using the Texas median income for 2018 of $59,206, that gives us a value of just under $4 million for last year, which we are very excited about. Moving on to fundraising, we did have fundraising events on all of our campuses, and our community supported our PTAs to the tune of over $1 million, which averages almost $60,000 per campus. And to give you just an idea of some of the things that those volunteer hours and these fundraising dollars went to contribute towards, they were classroom enrichment, diversity in environmental programs, graduation events, literacy programs, outdoor classrooms, parent education, school needs and improvements, school supply packs, school dances, senior scholarships, teacher supplies, teacher scholarships, teacher appreciation, and talent shows, to mention just a few. Our GCIC Council of PTAs holds events that brings our community volunteers and our district leaders together. One such example is our Founder's Day celebration, which we have in February of each year. Last year, our keynote speaker was the president-elect for Texas PTA, Susie Kennon. We also went to Rally Day last year. It was a legislative session, and so we took an entire busload of PTA members and convened at the Capitol with all of the other PTAs from around the state to talk to our legislators about the importance of public education. In April, we hosted our annual candidate forum for our school board election, and we have that moderated each year by the League of Women Voters. And in May, we were very excited to be able to host our final meeting of the year at the new Mustang Panther Stadium, and we got a personal tour from Dr. Ryan, which we were really excited about. In June, I attended a Texas PTA conference, and at that conference, GCIC Council of PTAs was awarded 13 awards, including the highest award that you can get, which is the President Challenge Award, and you will see there on the right-hand side, we were one of only four school districts to get that award, so we were very excited about that. We did conduct an informal and very short membership survey over the summer to give us an idea of what our members are thinking about our PTAs, and here are just a couple takeaways from that survey. Ninety-nine percent of the respondents felt that PTAs make a positive contribution to our schools. The thing they liked best about their PTA was they value the engagement and sense of community. One of the things they wanted us to continue working on was trying to include more people, and the comments that they had there were around specifically working families and those that don't have flexible work schedules and being able to attend the meetings and volunteer and really get more engaged in the school, so we are definitely going to work more on that. And we had lots of great comments that came out of that survey. This was one of my favorites. "We think PTA is a great group who is working to make our schools better." We used those results, as well as the other data that we have from last year, to come up with our goals and our theme for this year. Our theme is Raise the Bar, and you can see there the five goals that we put together for this year. And one of the new things that we did this year was we did our first annual summer training day. We brought together all of the PTA leaders from around the district in June to tell them about our goals for this year and to really ensure that they had the resources and the support that they needed to be successful for this school year. So, with the tying of that was really important. We wanted them to have the remainder of the summer to be able to really prepare for the year so that they could hit the ground running once school began. We hosted the annual PTA convention here in Grapevine. That was at the Gaylord. It was super fun having everybody here in our own backyard, and we had a boys trio from Grapevine High School that actually sang the National Anthem for the opening ceremonies at that event, which was really great. We participated in the Back to School Fair, and right before school started, we found out that we had four campuses that were named National Schools of Excellence. That is the highest award that you can get from national PTA, and it is based on family engagement. Those campuses were dubbed Elementary, Grapevine Middle, Heritage Elementary, and Silverlake Elementary School, and we were super excited. We've never had a National School of Excellence, so to have four, we were really excited about. I was very privileged to be asked to speak at convocation. We very much appreciated the opportunity to talk in that forum about our PTAs and about our community. We hosted our annual Presidents and Principals Breakfast in September. That's where we get together and kick off the school year, and this year, we really focused on brainstorming ideas for cross-campus collaboration, and you see Valerie there, who was also kicking off our reflections campaign at that event. A couple of other new programs. We have quite a few new programs this year. Our Community Partnership Program, you all may remember me talking to you about last year. That is really getting some steam behind it this year. We have quite a few people that have joined all of the PTAs in our district. The majority of our trustees have as well. Thank you all very much. Dr. Ryan and myself, we have many of our business communities, sorry, businesses in our community that have chosen to join all of our PTAs as well, and in addition, we have a couple of legislators. So, that program is going really well. Another new program that we have is something called GCIC eats. That's a Google Calendar that we have put together to compile all of the restaurant fundraisers that are going on around the district, and we are not restricting that to PTAs, so Booster Club, schools, anyone who is hosting a fundraiser in support of our district, we want them to utilize our calendar so that people can go there and find out where they can go eat to support our schools. Another new committee that we voted on in September was to add an exceptional children committee to our council. That is something that is sponsored by Texas PTA, and it is... Several districts around our state have that committee as well, and its purpose is really to support families of children who don't fit the standard learning model. So, you're talking about kids with dyslexia, that I know you heard about earlier tonight. You're talking about kids with ADHD, gifted and talented, autism, medically fragile, any family that may need some additional support navigating the education system. This committee is intended to provide them a voice within our PTAs and to also allow them to work together so that they can collaborate and find synergies. So, we're really excited about that. We've had a couple meetings so far with that committee. It'll get going in earnest right after the new year. Another group that I'm super excited about is the grandparent group. We have this kicking off on several of our campuses. It is being spearheaded by a really awesome grandparent from Heritage Elementary School. It is being spearheaded by a really awesome grandparent from Heritage Elementary School. And she hosted her very first meeting just a couple of weeks ago and had thirty participants. So we are obviously getting these grandparents to join our PTAs. We're also getting them involved in our schools and volunteering. We've been working with the HR department on getting volunteer orientation and getting their background checks and making sure that they are ready to go. One other new thing we're doing this year is community panel discussions. The idea behind those are to really allow our community to come in and have more of a two-way discussion with us. So ask questions, comments, provide suggestions, all of those things. It's really focused on having an informal, two-way discussion rather than a formal presentation. So our first one was on school safety, and that was very well received. I got a lot of good feedback after that. We are planning our second one, which will be in another month or so, and that one will be a student panel. We are looking forward to getting the expertise of our students involved with our PTAs. And then finally, we just wanted to recognize that really the heart of the PTA work that we do, it happens within our meetings. That's where we share, that's where we collaborate, that's where we learn. And the district has been phenomenal about supporting us in those efforts, whether it be facilities, whether it be speakers, whether it be hosting us on a campus. We've had Alan Smith come speak, we've had Paula Barbaro come speak. Dr. Ryan speaks at every one of our meetings. And our President Round Tables, which we have monthly, have been hosted at both Cannon and at Bransford so far this year. And we've also had two community speaking events at both of our comprehensive high schools. There was one at Colleyville Heritage on funding college, and then one just a week ago at Grapevine on the legality of a student turning eighteen, which was fascinating. And then finally, I just wanted to make sure to recognize that Texas PTA is celebrating 110 years. Their 110-year anniversary is in 2019. And also, just to tee up the fact that our Council of PTAs' 30-year anniversary is going to be in January. So there will be more to come about that. That is going to be the theme of our Founder's Day. So please look forward to hearing more about that. And we just want to thank you so very much for all of the support that we get, not only from our trustees, but from the GCISD administration and staff, as well as our community. And we are very much looking forward to continuing to work with you all as we raise the bar. Thank you very much.
I think that presentation almost needs to be before everybody leaves, so they can hear the great things that y'all are doing. Thank you very, very much. It's amazing.
Great leadership.
Open forum, did we have anyone sign up? Okay. We move on to report to the Superintendent. Item A, Act on Maximum Class Size Exception. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, I think we're aware of the rule about maximum class sizes. A review of elementary classrooms in Grapevine-Colleyville ISD found that we have currently two classrooms that exceed the allowed class size limit. Colleyville Elementary School has one additional third-grade classroom that exceeded the class size limit by one student. And Bransford Elementary School currently has one first-grade classroom with one additional student. The recommendation is for the Board Trustees to approve the request for maximum class size exception for one third-grade classroom at Colleyville Elementary School and one first-grade classroom at Bransford Elementary School.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the Superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, in a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Seven, zero. I still have to look twice on that one. Thank you, Becky. Thank you, guys. Move on to item B, Act on Donation.
Yes, we have donation. The Cannon PTA is donating a Tinkerspace project. The first component is the Portable Discovery Playground Foam Block Engineering System. The project is valued at $20,000. Now, the recommendation's for the Board Trustees to accept the donation of a Tinkerspace project that includes a Portable Discovery Playground Foam Block Engineering System valued at $20,000 from the Cannon Elementary PTA.
Do I have a motion? Mandy?
I move that we accept the Superintendent's recommendation.
In a second. Second discussion. I will tell you, that's a lot of money. And I remember on a day, it's great that the PTA is here, that they had a hard time getting enough to even form a board at that school and look at them now. So that's a lot of work for that group.
When Tonah became the principal, there were seven people in the PTA. Seven.
Are you here? Sure do. There you are.
Well, there they are.
Thank you very much.
It is the coolest-looking system. I'm so excited for y'all.
Is it all three pictures or just the first one?
The first one is the first part, and then the rest of the funds, there's a committee. So those are just brainstorming items that they're considering.
Okay, okay, okay.
But it's the blue is what you're buying.
Blue is already, this is a picture at Cannon already, so.
That's awesome.
And that was an initial purchase, so they still have monies left out of that twenty that are going toward the items their committee has already kind of worked on.
Thank you.
Leadership Grapevine actually was touring Cannon the other day, so we had thirty-three participants from our community. And one of the things that they got to see were the students that were actually working with these, what are they called?
They are imagination playground blocks.
Of course they are. Imagination playground blocks. But I'm telling you, first graders were working with them, and it was a sight to see, for sure.
The picture. I wanted you to go look at those.
Yeah, very cool.
Team of eight building, right there. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, seven, zero. Move on to item C, Act on the 2018-19 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
The Board has received a copy of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ending June 30, 2019. And so I will pitch it to Deanne and allow her to introduce the cafer.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Carl Deaton here from Hankins East Up Deaton Ton and C Accounting Firm. And he is going to just go over the 18-19 audit report and just highlight some of that report. I do want to mention that the district did receive the Governmental Finance Officers Association and Association of School Business Official Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2018 audit report. And we will be submitting this audit report for consideration for the awards again this year. So I will go ahead and let Carl give you highlights of the audit report.
Thank you, Deanne. Dr. Ryan, members of the Board, I think you all have a packet in front of you that is the entire cafer. And in the middle of it is the financial section, which is the audited financial statements. That section begins with the Independent Auditor's Report, which basically says that these statements that you see in there present fairly in all material respects the financial position, the results of operation of the school district for this last fiscal year. And it's a fairly lengthy report, and there's half a dozen pages I want to hit the highlights on and then see if you have any questions, beginning with page fifty. In my mind, page fifty is probably the most important page in the report to know and understand because it shows the three largest funds that the district uses to track dollars and the results of the operations last year for those three funds. The column on the left is the General Fund. And basically, the General Fund accounts for all revenues and expenditures that aren't required to be accounted for in another fund. The General Fund, you see revenues of $186 million last year, expenditures of $185 million. Bottom line, you see pretty close to break even, a $181,000 increase in fund balance last year in the General Fund, from $56.9 million to $57.1 million. One way to evaluate whether that's a healthy fund balance or not is to look right up that column and at that $185 million of expenditures. If you do the math, $57 million is about three and a half months' worth of reserves or equivalent, reserves equivalent to the spending that you did last year. And I would always stand up here and tell you that you need to shoot for a minimum of three months or 25%, which is your policy to have in fund balance. If you turn back to page forty-six, you'll see that same fund balance, because basically what fund balance is, is assets minus liabilities. And so on page forty-eight for the General Fund, you'll see the assets and liabilities detailed. But at the bottom, where you see that same $57 million fund balance, you'll see some of it basically is earmarked or spoken for. Some of it are commitments, such as the amount that's already been used to purchase inventory and make prepayments. You see the $6.6 million, that is the amount that was the initial projection of the deficit for 1920 and the initial budget you approved for 1920. And you see other amounts that the Board has committed in the past for construction, claims, and so on. When you factor all that out, the unassigned fund balance portion of that $57 million is $44.9 million, which is just under three months' worth of that spending number we looked at. But overall, it is, in my opinion, is a healthy fund balance for your district. One other place you'll see the General Fund is on page fifty-four, because page fifty-four shows the required statement of those same actual revenue and expenditure numbers compared to the budget. The original budget you adopted well over a year ago, the final amended budget that you adopted this last June. The variance column compares your final budget with your actual. And while you see that there are some what look like large numbers in that variance column, percentage-wise, they're pretty small. The revenues were $2.1 million more than what you had budgeted, which is just a little over 1%. Expenditures were $4.2 million less than what you had budgeted, which is just a little over 2%. So percentage-wise, the variances were not that great at all. And fortunately, they were all positive variances. In fact, none of the three funds you're required to legally adopt a budget for had any functions that were over budget this last year, which is good. You get a little ding from the TEA if you are over budget, but that was not the case. Going back to page fifty, the other two funds that are on page fifty, the middle column is the Debt Service Fund. That fund collects the interest and sinking portion of your property taxes and makes the principal and interest payments on your bonded debt. And you see a bottom line, $1.9 million increase to its fund balance, giving you an ending fund balance of $62 million, which that fund spent $54 million last year, so that is a nice, healthy reserve. That reserve is restricted for future bond payments, for adjusting the debt service, the INS tax rate in a year, if you're able to do that. But that's $62 million I know y'all have used for some prepayments in the past on some bond series. And there's fund balance there to possibly do some of that in the future as well. The other column on page fifty, the Capital Projects Fund, you did not sell bonds this last year, but you have bond proceeds from previous years that continue to be spent on construction projects, and that's what this fund accounts for. And you see basically a $43 million decrease in its fund balance due to the spending on construction projects this last year. Still $87 million of fund balance, or in essence, unspent bond proceeds at June 30, The column on page fifty-one that says Other Funds, that is about two dozen other funds that are used to account for dollars in the district. There's just one of those I want to point out. Back on page 107, beginning on page 106 is where those couple dozen other funds are detailed. And basically, what you find back here, and they're called special revenue funds, you'll find all the various federal, state, and local grants you receive for various purposes, the title funds, special education, the instructional materials, a lot from the state, things like that. But also on page 107, that fund, that column 240 is the Food Service Fund. The Child Nutrition Fund is the other fund that you're required to adopt a budget for. And bottom line, you see that the Food Service Fund had a $77,000 profit this last year. It's got $1.3 million of ending fund balance, which is getting close to the three months of spending maximum that it's allowed to have. So there is fund balance there to use for indirect cost reimbursement to the General Fund or to use for capital needs that come up at the various schools. There's really none of these other funds that I wanted to point out, but they're back here on pages 106 to 109 for you to look at if you're interested. The other thing I want to point out is back on page forty-three. Page forty-three is the Consolidated Financial Statement. Basically, all of those funds we just looked at, plus the capital assets that the district owns, less the bonded debt that the district owes, is all compressed into one financial statement here, one asset liability statement on page forty-three. In addition on this statement is where the last few years, every school district in the state's been required to pick up its proportionate share of the TRS pension liability and what's called the OPEB liability, which is the health insurance liability. Unfortunately, those two TRS liabilities throw your district and most every district into a bottom-line negative position on this statement. But your negative $4 million is really relatively small compared to other districts that I go to of your size or larger. And in fact, if you added up all of those accounts that are causing that negative, it's about $84 million of liabilities having to be recorded in here that really are just accounting entries related to those TRS unfunded liabilities. When you factor those out, that bottom line would be a positive $80 million, which is really more indicative of where your district stands as far as an asset versus liability comparison. Unfortunately, the TRS numbers just kind of skew this schedule. Fortunately, this is a schedule that only shows up in the audit report. The only people interested in this are the TEA and possibly the bond advisors, your financial consultants. It's those fund financial statements we looked at that really are of interest to you and are used to manage the funds, the dollars of the district. And all of those are really in healthy shape at June 30. Okay, I think that's all I wanted to point out in there. The other thing I wanted to mention, though, is separate from this bound report, you had a single audit report. Because you receive more than $750,000 of federal dollars, there is some additional compliance work that has to be done that basically leads to the publication of that second document. The one financial page in that document is the listing of all of the programs under which the district receives federal dollars. You can see it totals to, I don't have mine in front of me, but it's eight or nine million dollars. It's quite a few dollars that the district receives for child nutrition, special education, the title programs, and so on. Since it's more than $750,000, we're required to choose a program or two each year and perform compliance work on to see if you complied with the specific requirements of that program. In that report, it's disclosed that the special education cluster, the special education programs are the ones that we looked at this last year. And one of those two additional auditor's report letters in that section basically discloses that we found no non-compliance issues in, or, yeah, we had no compliance problems. We found no non-compliance issues, that's the right way to say that, with that program. The other auditor's report letter back there is just a general letter that addresses internal control and compliance in general. If we had found material weaknesses, significant deficiencies in the internal control system, they would have been written up there. If we had run across other compliance issues, whether state or federal, we would disclose those if they were material enough to be disclosed. There's nothing being disclosed in that letter either, out of the ordinary. So basically, it was a clean, single audit report this year as well. Okay, I think that's all the time I wanted to take up of yours. If you've got any questions, be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Carl. The recommendations for Board Trustees to approve-
The recommendations for board trustees to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen comprehensive annual financial report.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Doug, thank you, in a second. Jesse, thank you.
I'll second.
Now, do we have any questions? None?
Just a great report.
Yep, as another great report.
Thank you.
I have great staff, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
Congratulations, stay in.
Yes.
Good work, thank you, Carl. Appreciate it.
Great job.
Move on to item D. Cannot believe this is already. Act on twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, school year budget planning calendar.
Yes, we are already in the budget planning work for next year. The district uses a planning calendar to provide a timeline for preparing the budget and ensure that the date requirements are met with the eventual goal of adopting a budget before June thirty of twenty twenty. So you can see that the board planning calendar for the budget is there on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine. It's very similar to this past year's budget planning calendar. Recommendations for board trustees to approve the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year budget planning calendar.
Do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse, second. Louis, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item E, act on Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors election.
Yes, each year, we have to elect or at least cast ballots toward electing candidates for both the Dallas Central Appraisal District and the Tarrant Appraisal District, so we'll consider those consecutively here. The recommendation is for the board, the recommendation is to cast the vote for Mr. Steve Pryor. And so I'll read this, the recommendations for board trustees to adopt the resolution casting one vote for the election of Mr. Steve Pryor as the suburban school district's representative to the Board of Directors of the Dallas Central Appraisal District.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky, a second. Mindy, a second. Any discussion?
That's one vote out of how many?
One vote. Out of...
Tarrant County, it's about five thousand.
I don't have that letter with me to show somebody.
Well, this is Dallas County.
No, this is Dallas.
I know, I know, I'm just trying to compare that. I don't remember what it is for Dallas.
We have a small slice of Dallas County.
We have a very, very small.
Yeah.
So just as a reminder, Steve is already currently serving on the D C A D and was on the Grand Prairie School Board. So I think he's been doing, he's kind of a watchdog over there in Grand Prairie. I think he'll continue to serve as well on the D C A D.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item F, act on Tarrant, Tarrant County Appraisal District Board of Directors election.
Yes, in this election, we have two hundred and forty-three votes. The recommendation is for the board trustees to adopt the resolution casting two hundred and forty-three votes for Mr. John Fagan for the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky, a second.
Second.
Doug, thank you. Any questions?
That's out of two hundred and forty-three, out of a little over five thousand.
Right. We do have... I know it was nice to have some choice, as usual, and I think Mr. Fagan's resume had a lot to speak for.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you're right, thank you for saying that, Becky. We all received resumes from the ones that were interested, and this is who our recommendation is for.
I have stood out.
Yeah. So, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. I move on to item G, act on, act to adopt the Hart Inter-Civic Variety Version two point three point one for G C I S D elections conducted by Tarrant County Elections Administration.
Yes, the Hart Inter-Civic Verity Version two point three point one. That's the system that's used by Tarrant County Elections Administration when conducting absentee voting by mail, early voting by personal appearance, and regular voting on Election Day, and provisional voting. So the system is going to be used in accordance with the terms and conditions specified in the certification order issued by the Texas Secretary of the State. Recommendations for board trustees to adopt the use of Hart Inter-Civic Verity Version two point three point one for all future elections.
Do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
In a second. A second, maybe, thank you. All that fancy word for a voting machine, right?
That's prescribed to us.
This is the one that some of us got to use for the Constitution, where you typed in, put the paper in, and all that.
Can you repeat that?
Pardon me?
Can you repeat that, Dr. Ryan?
Oh. A voting machine. Any questions? Or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item H, approve the use of interest earnings in the two thousand and five bond to hire Huckabee and Associates, Inc. to evaluate and upgrade or replace auto and audio and visual equipment in administrative's control room and boardroom and track lighting in the boardroom.
Yes, this is for, this item is for this room and then the control room that's just down the hall. Paula, do you want to add anything to the summary?
I'll just point out that the evaluation is to review the equipment that we have, look at what can be used, what needs to be replaced or upgraded as far as the audio and the visual are concerned, so that we have appropriate recordings, and then to take a look at this track lighting here, to see if there's a way to move towards L E D fixtures, which would do several things. One, deal with the heat, but also add to just, you know, the color or the rendering behind video and pictures and the whole room itself.
All right, thank you, Paula. The recommendations for board trustees to approve the use of forty-six thousand dollars of interest earnings in the two thousand and five bond to hire Huckabee and Associates, Incorporated to evaluate and upgrade or replace audio and video equipment in the administration control room and boardroom and track lighting in the boardroom.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
In a second. For he, thank you, second. Any discussion? They're gonna put like a filter on that light, or like a camera, and do different...
We can work on that. Yes, ma'am.
Help with lines and some of our other trustees, maybe.
No, no. Just Lisa.
Because that is a very, very bright.
It is. It's been that way for a long time on you.
Yeah.
I noticed, I like the two ends that are out. It's not as bright. It's nice over here now.
Ah, we need to change that.
Keep making me look at it.
Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
Do we know anybody who works at Huckabee?
We'll have to hear from him. Move on to item...
He's hiding back.
Move on to item I, approve the change order number zero one, closing the athletic lighting construction package.
Yes, this package was for new lights at tennis courts at Calla Heritage and Grapevine High School, new lights for Grapevine High School baseball and softball fields, and this change order is returning ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars of unspent contingency funds. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the deductive change order number one, closing the athletic light package, lighting package, and releasing ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars of contingency to the district.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Mindy?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, in a second. Doug, thank you. Any discussion? None? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item J, approve the use of interest earnings in the two thousand and five bond to hire Huckabee and Associates, Inc. to perform a study of the creek drainage near Cross Timbers Middle School and approve the letter agreement for the investigative study.
Yes, as we know, on Father's Day last year, we had another flood in that creek behind Cross Timbers that not only was expensive, but it kind of put us out of business in the main gym for a long period of time. And so this is to be able to study that, to see if there are things that are, can be adjusted in the creek, or fixed in the creek, or, you know, what the situation is to be able to mitigate that for any time in the future. Recommendations for the board trustees to approve the use of six thousand dollars of interest earnings on the two thousand and five bond to hire Huckabee and Associates, Incorporated to perform a study of the creek and drainage near Cross Timbers Middle School.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Louis, second.
A second.
Becky, thank you. Any discussion? Jesse?
Yeah, just a quick question on this. Is there any timetable on this, Dr. Ryan? I mean, once the study starts, do we have any idea, is this gonna be something that we'll have, what, in a couple of months, or next board meeting? I mean, I'm just...
No, I think it will take a little bit longer than that. We would just now be approving the letter engagement for Huckabee to get started and bring in a civil engineer to perform the research and evaluation. I would expect this to take a few months, and this is just phase one to kind of evaluate conditions and begin facilitating meetings with us about possible recommendations for a future project. And without knowing what those recommendations would be, I don't even know when that future project would be. We have not discussed a specific timetable. We can certainly keep you informed about what that looks like.
I had a question too. So Paula, how much ground is this gonna cover? Are we only looking at the portion of the creek that's on the school district property, or are they gonna give us a little bit more holistic look as far as what's maybe happening downstream and also upstream?
I may ask Gary to come speak to that, but in addition to, is he shrinking? No.
He was hiding, I saw him.
It's a combination of looking at the drainage studies and/or research and information that's available from the cities, because you've got tributaries coming in both directions, as well as looking at the creek on that side and what, if anything, is any different. If you'll recall, this is actually the second time that that area has flooded that particular gym. I also believe that we are very near, if not in, a flood plain that has been established for a long time under FEMA rules in that particular area, and probably even as far back as when that school building was actually built in that area. And so, you know, as far as how much of the creek and how far, I think that's, you know, in total landmass, I think that's hard to say, but when you're looking at calculation, flow calculations and things of that nature, that will kind of determine maybe what has happened or what is happening, so.
Thanks, Paula. I think the biggest thing that Paula mentioned was the FEMA part of it, and so anytime you're dealing with federal waterways and waterland, you know, across your property, so it comes from somewhere and it's going to somewhere, so they, those FEMA maps have been redrawn a time or two. So I think when I talk to our civil engineer, those are the things that they're gonna have to study more in depth, is what do the real maps say? What is FEMA, what's actually recorded? What's, because a lot of times, what FEMA has recorded is different than what the city has. And so we've got to go back and really trace all that and find out what, where is it coming from? And large area drainage for miles are probably things that they'll study more than anything. So really, a lot of coordination between FEMA and the city.
What, is there, because twenty-six, you know, has gone to, is there any studies prior to what the water flow was through that creek prior to the building of twenty-six, because we've dealt with some water issues here at this building, and because a lot of that water is now running down the concrete and so forth, is there any way to look at flow and tributaries prior to the building, if that added to it?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's one of the bigger, in terms of the local jurisdiction, we've got to really look at, is what did they, what was allowed, what, you know, what was designed?
What impacted?
How was it, was it built correctly? You know, all of that stuff is, are things we've got to really kind of study. So that would involve going back to the engineers, going back to the tech stop people that built twenty-six, et cetera. So there's be a little bit of time spent on that.
I will say this, the first flood, my knowledge of the first flood of that particular gym was prior to the Highway twenty-six work, so that's kind of interesting as well, when you look at it historically, but then there's been a lot of development throughout our both municipalities over the course of time, so.
And is there, is the state identified from, because that's a state highway, the only state highway that runs through basically Colleyville and parts of Grapevine. I mean, I know we have one twenty-one that runs through Grapevine. But are they released of any liability if anything is found, because that's a state project versus it's fallen on us?
You know, I can't speak to the liability piece of it. All I can, all I can say is when there's a state highway or even just a city street that runs through, over, around a FEMA flood plain, that's got to be studied to some degree. So there's some record of that. Now, I can't really speak to the liability of the state, et cetera, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This proposal, where this is a study of the creek, we're not looking at the building yet, to see if the building needs any changes.
Right.
It's just the creek.
That's correct.
Well, as you remember, I mean, yeah, the creek and that land around there, because we couldn't, we had issues, not issues, but we had to look at where we placed the MAC boundary-wise, because that is a flood, that was what, a hundred-year flood zone or fifty-year flood zone?
Hundred.
It's a hundred.
Hundred?
Yes, sir.
But yes, this six thousand is for the creek level by the banks.
So what's the, what are we trying to do from the outcome of this? Because I know we get worried about when we built the MAC, that there was some worries about we could have to go in and clean up, reinforce concrete lines, sack create it from the creek standpoint, if we found some impact issues on our side and so forth. Are we opening Pandora's box by doing this research and contacting these agencies to potentially have to do something on our dime or our budget?
That's a good question. I think I want to, I think I want to answer this. Is the portion of the, any kind of FEMA-related waterway that crosses your, you know, the school district's boundaries, is really all you're entitled, or you're, you know, at liberty to do or responsible for? Now, as we know, there are upstream, downstream ramifications for that. Let's just say you have, what part of the study said, it's just too, it's messy, you gotta clean it up, you gotta, well, then what do you do upstream? There's, like Paula said, there's development that's happened for miles upstream and even downstream that hasn't been developed yet. So there's, you just have to look at all that. I know that you're responsible for your piece, but...
And one of the reasons I look at, I'm looking at Google Maps right here, because I drive by it every day, and one of the things that I look at, we talk about the development, but if you go north of twenty-six, it's all pasture land, other than the fuel tanks.
Yes, sir.
The pipeline for the gas and storage that comes and out. But downstream from us is massive, because that runs into Par Park and to that, and then feeds under, goes through neighborhoods, and then feeds into three six, so I mean, it's just...
Yeah, but those tanks, they took out, they eliminated a pond that was there right alongside Brumlow. They, when they built those two, those two newest tanks...
They eliminated that catch pond there, across from Living Earth.
Yeah.
But now, that was a catch tank. Now, that's gone, it's gone through the path into the...
So...
I don't mean to get off topic, but this is just...
No, but one of the things I do want to say is the intent of the study was to collect the information to see what it is we can do to mitigate or prevent this from happening, because I'm concerned also that from an insurance perspective, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have people who want to cover us in that particular area. And so it's to try to help prevent it from happening to ourselves, not necessarily correct other things in other places, but what can we, we have to first understand what might be happening to then kind of come up with a plan for what we can do to protect our building.
Paula, I appreciate it, because I never thought about it from, okay, we've had two floods in twenty years, insurance looks at it and says, hey, you're not covered.
Yeah.
You have to annex that piece of the property.
What are you doing with this?
Self-insure.
Well, and then, you know, and then we also, I mean, to that, we have to know exactly what the issue is and what's causing that. So in order for us to even begin to look or explore other venues, I mean, we have to figure out what's, what's the problem here, what's causing this.
And like you said, the solution may be as simple, not simple, but it's how do we protect our building?
Right.
You know, instead of how do we fix the FEMA problem?
Correct, correct.
So we'll just have to look at all that.
Yeah, and the reason I was asking about the timetable is just, I was looking at next spring with April and with the, and that's why I was curious to find out as to what, I know things couldn't happen that quick, but I was just curious in terms of the study itself, how long you, any idea as to what you all thought that might look like?
We'll dive in tonight, or in the morning, we'll talk to the civil engineer, we'll get a, we'll get a timeline, and maybe at the next board meeting, we'll at least have a timeline for you and what that might entail, so we can at least get a better gauge on that.
Exactly, okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions for Gary?
Any ideas to what you all thought that might look like?
We'll dive in tonight or in the morning, we'll talk to the civil engineer, we'll get a, we'll get a timeline and maybe at the next board meeting, we'll at least have a time timeline for you and what that might entail so we can at least get a better gauge on that.
Exactly. Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions for Gary?
We we don't, Paula, we haven't heard or gotten any notice from the city that that little bitty property that's, you know, up there is like is dev- is planning to be developed anytime while we're doing this study.
The little bitty property where?
It's up on the one that's on twenty-six, it was like the...
The old nursery.
Yeah, the nursery.
Oh.
The house that was inside. And backyard, the trampoline or backyard playground.
No, we understood at one point that there was a buyer for that, but then nothing, you know, and a lot of things left physically, but nothing since then that we're aware of.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item K, approve the inter-local agreement with Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District for Commercial Driver License Skills Testing.
Yes, for our bus drivers, they have to take these exams and sometimes the wait is between four and six weeks. And so this is a, an agreement with Carrollton Farmers Branch to be able to greatly reduce that time, shorten that time. Recommendations for the board trustees to approve the inter-local agreement with the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District for Commercial Driver's License Skills Testing Service.
Do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation, please.
Second?
Second.
Doug, thank you, second. Any discussion? Any questions? Ben?
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah. Yeah.
Almost a no-brainer.
Yeah.
You find sleepwalk weight for me or about...
I'm ready. I'm paid attention.
Yeah, needs to raise his hand.
I know.
What are we on? No. All those in favor? I've... Oh, gosh.
Come on, we've got to log it up, it's nine o'clock.
We're like ahead of schedule.
Motion carries seven zero. That is it for our action items, the rest are informational only. Item L, update the twenty sixteen bond program.
Yes, this is an update of the items that we have working in the district, and it seems like Gary is approaching, and I'll turn it over to Paula for an introduction.
Oh, have you again? Good evening.
So we do have projects nearing completion, and then we have some ongoing work at Grapevine High School, Glen Hope and Grapevine Elementary, of course, the addition there. And then just a brief update on the projects that we already have in design for twenty twenty. Welcome back, Gary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Good evening again, trustees, Dr. Ryan. It's nice to be back with you this evening. I will...
Oh, really?
Again, I'll be brief, I promise. So what we decided to do here is on the twenty nineteen renovations is list, just for reference, what what we've been worked, we all have been working on, and really so we just kind of don't keep repeating ourselves, the substantial completion at each one of these projects has been achieved for those renovations, so that's that's good news. Final completion will be when all of the punch list items are done, and we're just really, really close. Warranty and other closeout documentation has been completed and submitted. Then we go through a process of assembling all that, including closeout documents, et cetera, and that'll go to Chris and Paula and and their teams for review as well. And then we can come, like we did with the sports lighting package, the next step would be to close it out from a financial standpoint. So ongoing work really, and you'll see here in a few minutes, a classroom addition at Grapevine Elementary, corrections to some exterior work at Glen Hope, I'll talk to you a little bit about that, and renovations at GHS. Couple of shots here at the entrance, controlled vestibule at Grapevine Grapevine High School. So just progress going on here. The one on the left is really a shot through that controlled vestibule. Then on the outside really is just some some final stucco work and cleanup work on the exterior at that location, so work is in progress there. If we move over to Glen Hope, you'll see there on the white portion of that, that's the newer addition for that building. Don't recall offhand, Paula, what that was a year.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety-nine, so the newer addition. And so part of the work there was to look at some of the reported indoor air quality issues there, so we had to remove the brick. And when the brick was removed, there were some conditions at the windows and with the exterior jip sheathing that caused us to say, hey, let's let's look at some of those details. So, long story short, we provided Lee Lewis with some details on how to repair some of those items, and that's in pricing and review right now. So, so at the very least, since the building is basically wide open to the elements, we need to put some tieback on there, tie it down real good and secure that. So that's what that, that's what you're actually seeing there. So at Grapevine Elementary School, the classroom addition is moving forward and on schedule. Some of the roofing work has begun where you're tying the new to the existing. Exterior sheathing work has also begun, and a lot of the interior wall construction and work and overhead systems are are taking place now. Just a couple of shots from the exterior. You get a good idea of the grade elevation difference there, so lots of cut and fill to do and really just to tie in at at your floor levels up high. On the inside, you see again a lot of the metal stud work and a lot of the overhead systems from fire sprinkler systems to lighting, HVAC duct work, et cetera. So the project is moving along at a really nice pace and on schedule. The twenty eighteen projects, really from the Cannon Stadium and the MAC and the PAC standpoint, we're reviewing substantial completion and final completion documentation. There are a few things left really on the punch list, things that continue to to be an issue that we're working on with with contractors. So one of those includes the speakers at the stadium, some of the laminate millwork finishes at the press box, some drainage at Cannon, not not a huge issue, just some ponding there that we're asking the contractor to go take a look at. And then the unit heater is finishing up there at the MAC and the PAC. So there's a few things, we're just staying on top of them about that, and they're they're actually responding. So we're we're in good shape there. And then finally tonight, the for the twenty twenty projects, just an idea of really what is going on, really behind the scenes, Bear Creek, Ransford, Colleyville Elementary, Heritage Elementary, CHHS, and then some work here at this building to remedy the moisture intrusion. Those are some projects that are on the books and on the board right now. The Swim Center, we've done some evaluations to determine really schedule and scope within a certain window of time that we have. So we're working with Lee Lewis and and our and our consultants to to figure all that out right now. Meetings with the principals at the other campuses to review that bond scope with them is underway. And so in our process, we're at about fifty percent construction documents, and so we're getting close to the point where we put those drawings out for bid with Lee Lewis. Fifty percent CD documents are due to the district for for their review on twelve five. And so that's really where we are in the process for the twenty twenty projects. So with that, I will entertain any questions you have.
Do we have any questions?
On the, at Glen Hope, we've got the seal on there now, the, is that covering windows too for the classrooms?
It's it's covering everything, yes, sir. It's from from the roof line down to the foundation currently, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it was to seal up basically while they evaluated what needs to be done now to make further correction to that facility. And so I anticipate that we'll be bringing some sort of a change order to the board next month.
Probably next month.
We hope next month, a few weeks, basically on that, to get that from Lee Lewis, so. I would say though, I believe that some of their, the way they're looking at the type of work that might be involved with correcting that addition and the way it was constructed at this point might be something that we have to hang on to do in the summer, potentially because of the intrusion into the walls that are literally the wall of the classroom. One of the things that we're in conversation with the campus about right now is whether or not they can vacate some of those rooms to other parts of the building, but I'm not really sure that's feasible at Glen Hope to to try to continue. So if not, we will certainly keep the building safe and and, you know, make sure that nothing can get in, which is why you see the wrap that's there in place.
Is there, is there a temperature insulation still between the, in those walls or is a lot of that pulled out?
So far, so far it's been fine.
Okay.
There's there's still insulation within the the metal studs, and then that the kind of the black darker jip sheathing is still there, and then they wrapped it with a tieback. So it's, all it's missing is the brick, which is not an insulation material necessarily. So in theory, the insulation value is still there, it's just the exterior material that's in question.
Paula, if it... I'm sorry, Becky.
If it has to be pushed this summer, can you get it done in?
In the summer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
You're welcome.
Move on to item M, review owner contingency expenditures.
Yes, we have listed the owner contingency expenditures from the stadium, but packages A, B, and C will be subject to your questions.
Any questions? Okay. Move on to item N, review twenty nineteen, twenty twenty board planning calendar.
We have one change for this month, it's to move the course selection guide from November to December. That's the only change.
Any questions? Remove to, move on to item O, request for reports to the board. Do I have any?
I would like to make a request. In our board policy, we all are required, we impose on ourselves the requirement to do background checks, and I just want to, for, you know, accountability, just to have actually do a report next week, next month, that we've all completed that.
Okay, yeah, I've made a note.
And it might be, I think it'd be good to add to the board ca- board planning calendar as well that we do that maybe in August before the school year starts, just to confirm that everybody's done that, so if we are on campus, that staff knows what to do.
Sure.
Does he need a second for that request to be?
He does need a second for the request.
I'll, I'll support those requests.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Doug. Any other request? Move on to the consent agenda for approval. Jesse?
Yes, on the consent agenda, I'd like to pull items M, N, O, and P.
M is in Mary, N in Nancy.
M is in Mary, N is in Nancy, O is in Oscar, and P is in Paul.
Okay. Do I have a motion for items A through L?
Yes, I'd like to move that we accept items A through L on the consent agenda.
You have a second?
I'll see.
That, Louis, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item M, bid consulting training professional in character development, business, classroom, and student services.
Yes, I'd like to just simply state that for items M, N, O, and P, I will be abstaining from the vote as well as recusing from discussion.
Okay, we still need to vote on each one of them.
Right, correct. I just...
Can we lump those together?
I'd prefer not.
That we need to move to the original one. That would be a good idea. So item M, Dr. Ryan?
Yes, these are bids for consulting training professional in character development, business, classroom, and student services. The recommendations for board trustees to award the proposal for consulting training professional in character development, business, classroom, and student services to Two Words Character Development, E X Dojo Smash Division, Amy McLaughlin, mentoring minds, and music, travel consultants.
Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Doug, in a second. Mindy, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? opposed, abstaining. Motion carries six zero with with trustee Jesse Rodriguez abstaining. Move on to item N, bids on general building supplies and services.
Yes, this is for general building supplies and services. It's a supplemental bid, the recommendations for board trustees to award the proposal for general building supplies and service to Communication Concepts, Simba Industries, and Squeegee Squad.
That's a good name. Do I have a motion for that?
I may that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, in a second. Becky, thank you. Any discussion? That is a very clever name. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero with Jesse abstaining.
Yes, ma'am.
Item O, bids on science, technology, engineering, and math STEM instructional-related services, equipment, and software.
Yes, for these bids, the recommendations for board trustees to award the proposal for STEM instructional-related services, equipment, and software to the following vendors, Code Monkey, Learning A to Z, Mystery Science, and Oregon Education.
Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Doug, a second. Becky, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? opposed, abstaining. Jesse?
Yes, ma'am.
Six to, six zero, one Jesse Rodriguez abstaining. Item P, bid on technology services, equipment, and software supplemental.
Yes, this is a supplemental bid. We've had one respondent, the recommendations for board trustees to award the supplemental proposal for technology services, equipment, and software to performance scoring.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Louis, thank, a second. Jorge, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six zero, abstaining.
Yes.
With Jesse Rodriguez abstaining. Thank you, guys. Any announcements? Anything going on?
Just other than everyone have a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving break.
Before our next meeting, we'll have the Grapevine High Schools doing Christmas Carol.
Oh, that's right. That was true.
The weekend of the eighth, the tenth, I think.
And then the parade.
We've got the Christmas parade in Grapevine on the fifth.
That's right.
I was just going to look it up. That's your, that's your party, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not here.
Y'all be there.
We will be there.
What are we riding in this year?
Same thing.
Whatever you want riding. Tractor.
Boat.
Call Kubota. Can we take our...
Kubota tractor. I'll bring mine in there.
Do a boat.
Have boats.
Kyle Herter just playing playoff football in Abilene on Friday evening.
Who are they? Amarillo. Oh, that's right.
Amarillo by morning.
Any other announcements? Seeing none. Move on to adjournment. Motion to adjourn, Jesse?
Yes, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, in a second. Mindy, thank you very much. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Motion, we are adjourned at nine sixteen.
Let's go eat.